Hello, everyone. Cardinals in the house.[4.34][4.34][applause] Champions in the house. Okay, I want to call this meeting of the Landale City Council to order. I'm going to ask the Madam City Clerk to give us the roll call, please.
Mayor Pro Tim Osborne.
Here.
Councilmember Suarez.
Here.
Councilmember Kearney.
Here.
Councilmember Reed.
Here.
Mayor Paul and Miles.
Here. And now we're going to have our ceremonial portion of our program. Going to ask Councilman Daniel Reed to lead us in a pledge of allegiance. I'm going to ask Doris Hoffman to lead us in a word of inspiration.
All right, please rise. Gentlemen, if you would remove your hats, join along with me, right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bow your heads with me in prayer, please. Our Father in Heaven, we come to you this evening thanking you for the many blessings you have bestowed upon us. We thank you, Father, for the sunshine, and Lord, we thank you for the rain. But we would also ask, Father, that you would be with the homeowners who have had problems with the mudslides and all things in the area. We would ask, Father, that you would be with our first responders and protect them as they try to help the people. Be with our law enforcement agencies and all of the military that protect us. And, Father, we pray not only for our local council here and local governments, we also would ask your blessing on our state and our federal governments. And, Lord, we thank you for our Cardinal football team. And we thank you, Father, that they were able to do what they did this year representing the city of Landale and that there were no major injuries. We ask you to continue to bless us and be with us as a city.
All right, I love it, I love it, I love it. Okay, let's continue with our agenda. Tonight, we've got some champions in the house, and we want to recognize Landale High School Cardinal Football Team for being the CIF State Division 2A Champions. How about that? Let's give them a round of applause.[163.62][163.62][applause] First of all, I want to thank you, guys, for joining us tonight and for being champions. We know it took a lot of hard work and commitment to achieve the level for which you have achieved, and that is to be recognized. And so tonight, we just have a little presentation, just a little certificate to show our appreciation of your hard work and your dedication, because not only are you doing the Landale High School I'm proud, but you're doing the city of Landale as a whole I'm proud. And you should really be proud of yourself for all your accomplishments. I want to commend you and your teamwork and all the faculty at Landale High School and the coach and the staff, because we know it takes teamwork, right? And teamwork makes the dream work, right? And so for being a champion, we just want to give you guys a certificate on behalf of the city of Landale. I do have a little bit of information I want to read here really quickly before we take a picture. Your coach has the certificates for all the players. And let me pull it back a little bit, because I have on my reserve glasses.[229.01][229.01][laughter] On December 15, 2018, the Landale High School Football Team won the championship game and are now the state champions.[239.01][239.01][applause] Officially Division 2A State Champions. Now, to reach that goal, they also won the title of CIF Southern Section Division 5 Champions and, get this, CIF State Southern Regional Division 2A Champions. Look at that.[263.62][263.62][laughter] I love it. Now, according to Dr. Gregory, which is the superintendent, this is the first time for Landale High School in the Sentinel Valley, and I've been told that this is the first football state champion for any South Bay schools. That is to be committed. But let's give them a round of applause.[282.33][282.33][applause] Absolutely. So, on behalf of the city of Landale, I would like to congratulate the entire team and their coaches for this phenomenal accomplishment. And we sure that this came with many sacrifices. And at this time, I'm going to ask the principal to come forth, the superintendent and the coach to come forth. Coach Clark, Principal Rotas, and our superintendent Gregory O'Brien to come forth. Yes, ma'am. And you're welcome. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe the Principal Rotas is going to say a few words.
I just want to thank the council for the recognition of my coaches and my kids. I've watched these guys for four years. They are all very special to me, and I've seen how hard all of them work in the classroom, on the field, day in, day out, late into the night, doing the jobs of two or three people. And all of my other coaches who are able to join us tonight, they are a phenomenal bunch of individuals who make us all so proud to be part of this school and part of this city. And I know that they are going to come back as adults and make our community even better. So I thank you guys all for everything that you've given us.
All right. Mayor Paul and Miles, members of the council, we just appreciate your support for a long period of time, but of course, this season in particular. From my vantage point in my office, I'm able to see them practice and practice and practice, and they are relentless. It's not just, "Oh, we have talent." It's talent plus hard, hard work with great coaches, great staff, great principal, great individuals that are doing everything they can to ensure these students are not only great athletes, which you are, congratulations, but great men who want to grow up and become great individuals in our community. And so we're so proud of them academically, in sports, in everything that they're doing, we're very, very proud. So we also have our board president, Daniel Yarudia, who's here with us as well, and we're just so thankful and all of Sentinel Valley, and thank you for your support. We can't wait to see them also in the parade later on in the spring. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I was pushed over here.
Oh, I remember.
So, I mean, school board, I don't know if these guys even know who I am, but I'm a silent supporter, just like you guys, city council. But I go to the games. My parents go to the games. You guys have revitalized Landale football. You look at all the red that the city council is wearing, including lipstick.
Just the Cardinals.
But, guys, would you tell the city council whose house this is?
City House.
We can't hear you. What was that?
City House.
What does that mean?
City House.
That's what I'm talking about.[484.62][484.62][laughter]
Well, first of all, we just want to say, I piggyback on everything that they said, but thank you for having us. This is special, to be recognized by your city, and we just want to thank you guys for taking this time to recognize us. So, thank you for sure. You know, I can never thank my kids enough, because we wouldn't be standing here without the hard work of these young men and their families in supporting what we try to accomplish. You know, I ask these kids to do a lot, and they do it without hesitation. So I want to thank my kids as well, because we wouldn't be here without those kids' sacrifice and dedication and commitment. So, thank you. And you guys obviously give us a great example on what we need to be here in Landale. So, thank you again for having us.
Absolutely. Now, we're going to do one other thing, so we just had to change your plans, principal. I'm going to ask the team to join us on the dais behind us. Squeeze in. Instead of what we originally had thought about.
They'll make a better picture. Stay put, stay put. Stay good. They're going to come up behind us. Right up here. It's a better picture. Everybody can take their picture. See?
That was teamwork, thank you.
Ah, well, you agreed to that. Thank you. See our notes? Cheat our notes. Good, good, good. Pat, Pat's a Landale High Cardinal. And Rhonda is too. Rhonda, why don't you come on up? You're a Cardinal. We're Olympians.
Oh. And you? No. I want to point out what Olympians are. Some of them talk spin laws or god. Go ahead. He's trying to get right here. There's no more room.
You can move up. Everybody in?
Got everybody in there.
Congrats, guys.
Okay, we'll continue with our agenda. That was pretty good. Okay, now, we are now at item number D. Is it number D? A letter to the public safety report. Let's have the public safety report by our new lieutenant.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. I'd like to formally introduce myself. My name is Lieutenant Dan Holguin. I'm currently the operations lieutenant for South LA Station, operating in the acting captain capacity until we get a captain and a service area lieutenant. I can tell you that our ex-captains, Chief Ilivera, Commander April Tardy, will be in direct communication with the sheriff when the new one is appointed. They'll have their input, and they'll have the best city's interest in mind. Tonight, I'm going to present the public safety report for January 7 through February 3. On January 19, Deputy Paul Soldana was alerted to a black pickup truck driving to the parking lot located on the 400 block of Rosecrans Avenue. He ran the license plate. The plate came back to a different vehicle. This is a common way thieves attempt to conceal that the vehicle is stolen. After stopping the vehicle pending a stolen vehicle investigation, the driver started to quickly walk away to disassociate himself from the vehicle. Deputy Soldana told the driver to stop numerous times. He initially didn't comply, then after he complied. Deputy Soldana contacted the suspect to conduct a pat-down search for weapons. The suspect pulled away. There was a struggle that ensued with the suspect attempting to punch Deputy Soldana. With assistance of other deputies responding to the emergent call, the suspect was placed under arrest and booked at South LA Station without further incident. Another issue on January 20, Deputy Garrett Burson responded to the 4400 block of 161st Street regarding the domestic violence call. He contacted a female who stated that her ex-husband attempted to steal her purse, ultimately stealing her cellphone. The victim stated that she had gone with friends to a local restaurant, and at the location, she saw her ex-husband. During that incident, they became involved in an argument, and the suspect left the location. Hours later, when the victim returned home, she was surprised by her ex-husband at her residence. The ex-husband struggled for the victim's purse, ultimately stealing her cellphone, and the suspect then fled. The victim sustained numerous injuries. Deputy responded. They searched the area, and they found the suspect a short difference later. The suspect was positively identified, and it was also determined that the suspect had stolen items from the vehicle, her vehicle, and vandalized it. The suspect was arrested and booked at South LA Station. Also, on January 20, on the same day, we had an armed robbery occurred at the 15600 block of Inglewood doing business at Chevron. Three males entered the location and robbed the cashier at gunpoint. On January 31, during follow-up investigations, our OSS detectives, which is our gang detectives, authored a search warrant in the residence of Los Angeles in connection to this 211 robbery. During that search warrant, a handgun was recovered matching the weapon. A female was arrested for weapons violation. Also, our OSS detectives is working directly with LAP detectives, coordinating with separate robberies with the same MO. And LAPD already has two of those males in custody and were suspecting more to be sa. Last thing, on January 25, Deputy Lizette Camargo was driving Southbound Hawthorne Boulevard approaching 162nd Street, and she observed two males standing in front of S&amp;S Liquor. The males were spray painting gang graffiti on the buildings. Upon contacting the suspect, one immediately ran, however, she was able to capture one. The suspect admitted to being an active gang member and spray painting is a common way of claiming territory and intimidating the community. Based on that information, the suspect was arrested, and they're trying to find out who was the second one involved. This concludes my report. I can answer any questions if you have any.
Okay, lieutenant, thank you for your report. Are there any questions of the lieutenant's report?
No questions. Welcome aboard, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
No questions.
Yeah, just quick, thank you for the report. What was the deputy's name again that did the last graffiti arrest that you just mentioned?
Lizette, the graffiti?
Yeah.
Lizette Camargo, female.
I know in the past, we've given deputies commendations for making arrests of that, so I'll mention that to the city manager.
Okay.
I think it's warranted.
You're taken. And I will leave my phone number and business cards at any time you have any concerns. I know we don't have a captain or a service area lieutenant, but I am here to help, and any concerns you have, I will take care of.
Great. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any items from the city clerk department?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to remind the residents that, again, we are accepting applications for all commissions and committees. You must be over the age of 18, and the term of each commission and committee is a two-year commitment that's starting March 1, 2019. Applications can be obtained either on the city website or in person at the city clerk's office. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam. Next item on our agenda is oral communications. Oral communications, when you have the opportunity to speak to this body on items that are not on the agenda. If you would like to address the Landale City Council on items that are not on the agenda, we ask that you would line up by the flag. When it becomes your turn, if you can approach the podium, if you would start with your name first, we would appreciate that. At about two minutes, the amber light will come on, and that'll give you the signal to start wrapping things up. Let's have our first speaker. Lieutenant, can you close that back door for me? Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name's Lisa Aguilar, owner of Golden Diva Enterprises, certified event planner and community volunteer in your neighboring city of Hawthorne. Mr. Felix Padilla and I have had the opportunity to work in different capacities. Mr. Padilla has had a profound positive impact in the city of Hawthorne by restoring one of the oldest bars established in 1951 formerly known as the Falcon Inn with a troublesome path. It has been rebranded to Big Fish Brews and Tequila, which has become a hometown favorite, the place to be for a cocktail and live entertainment for a long day at work or a sit-down meal with friends or family. Mr. Padilla has also, Mr. Padilla also owns a Mexican Mariscos restaurant in Hawthorne, serving a delicious array of seafood dishes. Mr. Padilla is a respectable businessman who leads by example with integrity and serves the residents of Hawthorne with the highest standards in customer service. He most recently participated in the city business expo, networking with fellow business owners and connecting with the community he dearly serves. He is also a major contributor to fundraisers to support local nonprofits. For the reasons stated, I highly recommend that Mr. Padilla be granted the right to purchase and develop the commercial property located on the southwest corner of Hawthorne Boulevard and Manhattan Beach Boulevard, as Mr. Padilla has a proven track record of being a business owner that has a best interest at heart for the common goodwill, as he has done for us in the city of good neighbors Hawthorne. He will add value in the business sector of Landale, because he is a firm believer of hard work and dedication in serving the residents with a quality business that will benefit everyone that lives, works, and plays in Landale. Thank you.
Thank you.
How are you guys doing, members of the council? Well, she pretty much said a lot of things about me, and I appreciate her for coming out here to tell you guys a little bit of what I'm doing. And I just want you guys to understand one thing, too. When the football team came out here, I was so proud of them myself. And that's how I was. I was a kid in the city, doing the same thing. And that's why I think you guys should give me the equal opportunity to get this project. I own part of this, I own part of this property already. I don't know why you guys are not going with me to do this. The bidding process was ended for me and the other two persons who submitted the offer. So I know you guys are already doing business with these people, which you guys are already have a decision tonight to be made, that you guys are going to go with these people already. And I would like to remind you guys and tell you guys that why wouldn't you work with the local business before anything? Why you guys always go outside the radar? You know? I offer $600,000 more than any other bids. Why? They told me because I didn't put a deposit down. This, the bidding process was over, okay? I just did, I submitted a regular offer. I would like to have, I sent a letter to you guys saying that, "Go ahead and let me know what will be the terms, and if I need to pay it in cash or put it in a cashier's check or do whatever, after you guys give us an acceptance, I will go ahead and do it like a normal offer is done." You know? And what I wanted to tell you guys is that, you know, I'm here, I've been here for two years after you guys. You guys had a big problem trying to work with me, because I didn't want to give up my business. Then I decided to go ahead and go with this project, to go ahead and get it developed. I got hyped up with the city, with the members of the council and people, the member, you know, the citizens. And now you guys want to go to a different direction again. You know, I told you guys, I don't want to be blamed for this backfires on you guys, and I don't want you guys to harass me later that you guys want my property to make it look good. So, give me the opportunity first. If I don't perform, I would like to give it to you guys, so you guys can do what you need to do. But give me the opportunity, just like a citizen. I grew up here. I went to school here. You know, just like what you guys talked about, be proud of those people, be proud of me, to do something for the community. You know, I'm involved in schools, I'm involved with everything. What else do you guys need from me? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Honorable mayor and honorable council people. My name is Robert Jonas. I'm Felix Padilla's partner. My address is 23727 Hawthorne Boulevard, Suite 1 in Torrance. I have lived in the South Bay for 56 years, graduated from El Camino College, and boxed out of Shaw's Boxing Club when I was much younger. In Landale, I have owned four businesses and four properties. I've had my law office on Manhattan Beach Boulevard for 35 years. I have not been involved with this project in the past, in that I was trying to cut back because of my advanced age. But I have seen this property empty and nonproductive for many decades. I go back a long ways, probably farther than maybe some of you are old, I'm sure. So, I've seen a lot of changes here in this community. And I, I don't know, you remember when Cobra was filmed over at the Boys Market, when Leo's was down there on Inglewood Avenue, you know, a long ways down there? I remember a lot of that stuff. I was very active and very involved. I represented many, many people in Landale. So, I've seen this property for a long time, empty and nonproductive. I have the, I have the idea that Felix has of doing a development that the community will be proud of. Felix loves this city and wants the best for it. I am doing this individually with Felix, because I remember as a young poor boy from a family of 13 children from Iowa, when I came out here, that I also had great hopes in my heart for the future. I don't want you to mistake Felix's passion for the city for anything than what it is, passion. We need people with passionate. There are two issues to address. One, the procedural, in how the city offered the property on Manhattan Beach Boulevard for sale pursuant to a bid process at a price of 4.6 million, 4.650,000. The city must have had an appraisal or an opinion of value at that price. No bids were received during that process, and the bid process terminated. Subsequent thereto, the city received three unsolicited offers and then refused to accept any other offers. Felix and I submitted a letter of intent for 4,101,000, the highest of all three offers, and notwithstanding our request...
That's time.
Thank you, sir. Your time has exhausted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Talking about that same property, in the past, I've heard requests to be involved in meetings, so I think I have the same right as anybody else. If we're playing seniority, I guess Jim wins. I wanna talk about the large trucks that go down some of our narrow streets. Since October, I've had very bad accidents to my stopped or parked vehicles due to large trucks on Longdale streets. In fact, last, last month, I'll just say, I can't remember the exact date, a truck delivering contractor tresses hit my car, drugged my car eight feet, got, the guy got out, his boss showed up, it wasn't even there, claimed that they, that I parked in the red. No, he drugged my car into the red. When the wheels are forward, the rear ends of those trucks pivot, and that's what happened. He got a hold of my little PT Cruiser and probably destroyed it beyond repair, and I'll have to give it up. We're getting more and more of those size trucks on these streets during, during the construction process that we have going on all around us. I don't know what the answer is with the drivers, when they tell me they were born in like the year 2000, I'm just going, oh, boy, here we go. And also talking about the construction sites on my street and around my street, these guys who work there, they just don't seem to, they don't live there. They don't seem to care about taking care of their trash. They just throw it on the sidewalks, throw it at the railroad tracks. They can do better than that. And on the brighter side, I wanted to mention that in March 6th through 10th, there is a annual show at Long Beach called the Fred Hall Fishing Tackling Boat Show, and it's all family fun. Bring your kids, fish, kids fish free, kids under 16 get in for free. It's a great family fun event, and I'll be there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. How you doing, Sean? How you doing? Jay Gould, City of Longdale, 172nd Street. The parking is atrocious. You guys will not stop it. You guys will not stop it. They got a guy there that parks on a 20, 40-foot plot right in the middle, so you can't park on this side or that side 'cause of the driveway. My wife cannot go to work in the morning because his car is parked across our driveway constantly. The parking is atrocious. By the way, you added another 41 units over here, you're adding six over here, five on Redondo. Did you add any more streets? Did you add one street in this city? No, but you wanna keep putting more stuff. These kids that were sitting here ain't even gonna be able to survive in this city. You guys keep putting more and more and more. Change the law, don't go, hey, that's our code, we'll change it lower. Make five parking places for everyone. If you have a four-unit apartment, you got two units, you have two cars parked there, and then they have their friends all come over. What happens from that point on? You've got 22 cars on our street. I can't park on my street. Friday night, the cars are straight across, I can't get into my property. I have had it with the parking. Your laws aren't changing. Robert Poland Miles comes up to my house and tells me about a tax, but he doesn't come up there to tell me about, hey, what's going on in your street here? Harold Hoffman was there all the time. What is going on? What do you need? What is going on? I have never seen one of you guys at my house. Not one of you guys. I don't know who's getting paid off on this, but somebody must be getting paid off for all these big, John, don't look at me like that, Tiffany Israel. I was swatted by you guys, so don't tell me that. This is wrong, what you guys are doing. Something that has to be done. Either get my wife out or pay her and hire at the city. My wife can't get out in the morning, she loses her job. What does that say? What are we gonna do? What do you expect? The only thing that you did do good, and I'll give you this, Steve, don't get hired in shock, that guy's a damn good worker.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, that seems like that's all those who wish to speak on the oral communications, so we'll bring it up to the diocese for any comments by the council. Let's see, Daniel Reed, Councilman Reed.
All right, first off, I'd like to thank everybody who spoke. Really appreciate you coming out and speaking up. I'm gonna, yeah, I'm gonna step in it. You know, Felix, the bid process was out there, and I understand the dates were out, so, you know, I really can't say much more about the passing of that bid date, but I do appreciate your passion. Let's see, let's see, I know we've had a couple of things on the trucks as well, so sorry that the car got picked up there, Mr. White. We've had a couple of close calls on my street, and it's a whole lot wider than yours is, and I'm gonna pass it along.
Thank you. Mr. Pat Kearney.
Okay, I'll just piggyback on Dan's. Gary, I'm gonna turn it over to Steve, maybe you can find out about these large trucks and their trash is thrown out.
Yeah. Parking's one thing, they're allowed to use the streets to get to work sites, so if there's issues, certainly report them. In fact, Mr. White called me today on another matter, which I really appreciated, he gave me some information that we needed. In terms of parking in general, if someone's blocking a driveway, call PD in the evening, call the city in the daytime, we will be out there within minutes, and they'll be sited and or towed. So there is no reason, there is no acceptable reason for a car blocking someone's driveway. So it's just a matter of taking the responsibility to call us, and we will address it immediately.
And then I take offense to Mr. Gould saying that we're taking kickbacks because of the parking. We have, we're designated by the state of California to add homes, low to moderate, low income. It's not on us, our hands are tied. I wish Mr. Gould was in here and started reading some of the information here before it comes in and raises his voice. And with that, I'll pass it on to you.
Okay, Ms. Wurris.
Thank you to everybody that came out and spoke tonight. We appreciate you coming out. I think we will get a little more in-depth on the Manhattan Beach property later on in the agenda, and then I also wanna add on top of that with regards to housing, if anybody's been keeping up with the news. The governor, Governor Newsom, he's been, they've been going actively after cities who look like they're trying to prevent housing, so it is something that's coming from the state. It's something, I mean, we regulate as much as we can, but it is something that's coming from upper, so just wanted to mention that and pass it along.
Mayor Proton Oz.
Thank you, guys. You nailed it. If he's really upset, he should go to Sacramento and talk to those who are passing all these laws that force all this added construction and everything, or talk to the new governor. I think everything else has been covered on there, but, yeah, that's all I have.
Thank you. Now, you're exactly right. Even on my street, I mean, my street is a pretty wide street, and for some reason, people block my driveway almost at least, it's kinda slowed down, but in the summertime, I can guarantee at least once a week, someone is blocking my driveway, and there's a lot of parking on my, my street, reasonable amount of parking, I should say, on my street, but for some reason, people decide they wanna squeeze in a parking space or what have you when it's obviously that their vehicle cannot accommodate that space. So that's a problem. That's more not necessarily a, a parking problem as so much as a people problem. It's a behavior problem where people just feel that, you know, long as my car is parked, I don't care if it inconveniences someone else or what have you. Those type of things are really hard for a city to regulate because it's a, it's a behavior issue rather than a municipal planning issue. And yes, we can plan for more parking, but we have to plan that within the confines of what the state would provide. I mean, my colleague has just hit it right on the nail when she said that Newsom and this, and this didn't happen with the new governor, this is, has been the, the state of California's position for quite a while, is that they're interested in building housing opportunities with the whole notion that eventually a number of people would decide not to have so many vehicles and will take other modes of transportation or what have you. So they're forcing the cities to come up with these formulas that would not take into consideration as much parking as they used to take up. And so that's a state issue that is fit more for the legislature rather than the city council. We advocate through the League of Cities and Contract Cities all the time and push back on these pieces of legislation, but that's what, all we can do, but once it becomes law, we have to comply. You see, the Governor Newsom is suing a particular city on their housing, concerning their housing element and not being in conformance. That happens in the city of Longdale, and we lose, guess who pays the bill? Not the state of California, and really not even the city of Longdale, because when you look at it, where is the city of Longdale? The city of Longdale is you. The city of Longdale is me, the taxpayers. And so we have to keep that in, in mind and make sure that we are in conformance with state law, and we do all that we can. I understand the passion when you come home and you can't get into your driveway. Trust me, that has happened a few times. And I'll be frank with you, if it wasn't the fact that I was the mayor, we would have a couple of cars towed, you know, but once you, you know, you can't do that when you, when we, the mayor starts towing people's cars that's parked in front of your, your house, which you have every right to do, to do so, that's just where I just decide just to, to live with it, you know, but I don't encourage others to do that. If they feel that they need to call the sheriff, absolutely, call the sheriffs or code enforcement, parking enforcement, so that the car can be removed, because people should check to make sure they're not blocking before they park their cars, and that's, that's all we can say on, on that point. The other point we touched on was the, the vehicle. Is there any restrictions on like the, the size of vehicles that can go down on residential, residential streets? I know the weights, there's, there's a weight limit, and if they have more than two axles or whatever the formula is, but what about just the width itself?
Well, if it's a wide load, it's illegal.
Just weight. Okay, okay. Okay, and I encourage the municipal services to kinda take a look at 172nd Street to see what's going on over there, maybe if we had a little presence over there, people who realize they need to be more conscious of how they, they park in that area.
We can do that. We've done that before. We'll go out in the mornings and check an area when we get complaints.
Okay, thank you. Okay, with that, and we are gonna talk about the, the property on the former redevelopment agency property on item number 11, and we'll get a little closer in the agenda. And I wanna thank you guys for your, your comments regarding that piece of property. So with that, we're gonna move our agenda. We're gonna close oral communications and comments from the council, and we're gonna bring it up to item number, item H rather, and this is the consent calendar. What is the pleasure of this body concerning the consent calendar?
I don't see anyone wishing to pull anything, so I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Okay, the motion's been made that we approve the consent calendar by Reed and seconded by Kearney. Is there any discussion, did you want to pull the motion? Oh, just later on. Okay, is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing that with the council, please vote. Would you like to read that, Madam City Attorney?
I would. Item number three is an ordinance, and the title is Ordinance Number 1152-19, An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Longdale, California, Amending Longdale Municipal Code Section 2.12.080 pertaining to the required posting locations for ordinances, resolutions, and notices. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. With the council, please vote.
Motion approved unanimously.
Okay, thank you, Madam. Okay, item number 10 is a public hearing concerning the extension of the interim urgency ordinance pertaining to the operation of motorized scooters. Let's have the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, members of the audience. This is an extension of our existing 45-day moratorium on scooter programs. The council reviewed this item about 45 days ago, and pursuant to state law, we're required to allow staff additional time to draft the full regular ordinance, an additional 10 months and 15 days. Staff is working closely with, with the City Attorney's Office, and we're reviewing other ordinances. As you know, this is a new issue that's coming about. I spoke with MSD, they picked up scooters, I, they have a handful of them now, they've been trying to reach out to the scooter companies, Bird, and Lyft to come pick up their, their scooters at this point. Again, this is just for the public right-of-way, when they're riding around the city, that, you know, going into their properties and just leaving them on the sidewalks throughout the city, anywhere in parks, and just, they're just, as you know, the council's aware of the problem throughout the state. Folks are just, they typically pick them up at one spot, and then they drive them and leave them on sidewalks. As of recently of drafting of this ordinance, the City Attorney's Office did send us some recent issues that are coming up, folks that are concerned with ADA access, and there actually are agents, nonprofits out there concerned with the impacts to access on the public right-of-way for the ADA compliance. So there are a multitude of issues staff is working on, and we'll bring a full...